And for the Partner of the Year. Beautiful. So it's gonna go one, two, three, four, five in bits and pieces. And then Supervisor Aguirre will present the Partner of the Year. And then President Lee will do the final employer of the year. Can we do it from here?
We're all down here, I think.
Oh, you did get it.
Great. Okay. Awesome. Yeah, I just had. Well, good afternoon. It's 4:00 PM. We'll go ahead and reconvene into the open session. Actually, Vice President Arenas, would you mind to join us or lead us on the pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. If you're able to stand, please do so now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Lee, could we do a roll call?
Yes, let's go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Supervisor Abicoga.
Supervisor Young.
Here.
Supervisor Ellenberg.
I'm here.
Vice President Arenas.
Here.
And President Lee.
Good afternoon, President, as well.
Thank you, we have a question.
Thank you. We're moving to item number seven, which is the adoption of the recommendation proclamations. May I get a motion to approve and adopt item seven?
Motion to approve, Arenas.
Second, Young.
Moved and seconded, let's take a row.
Supervisor Abicoga.
Aye.
Supervisor Young.
Yes.
Supervisor Ellenberg.
Yes.
Vice President Arenas.
Yes.
And President Lee.
I as well.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, good. Moving on, we're going to present the 2025 Annual CalWorks Achievement Awards. Can we come down?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to meet the amazing families who have accomplished so much with the help of our county's CalWork program, as are my colleagues on the board. This afternoon, we will be celebrating the outstanding achievements of each of our award winners, as well as the important contributions of our Partner of the Year and the Employer of the Year. My colleagues and I are proud to introduce each award-winning recipient, so please join us as we tell their stories and congratulate them of their success. So at this time, I'll first call on Supervisor Arenas to present to Frank Delgadoio and Lisa Gina Kim.
Good afternoon, everyone. I get the honor of recognizing Frank G. Delgadoio III and Lisa Gina Kim. And I'd love to ask them to join me as I talk and share about them. If they happen to be in the room now, come and join me. Let's give them a big round of applause. I love it. So Lebanese-American poet Cahill Gibran wrote that, "Out of suffering have emerged the strongest souls." And Frank, as well as Lisa, found one another as they struggled with their deep personal trauma. Yet for the sake of their new family, they discovered the strength to forge a new path with the support of our county safety net services. Frank spent years in foster care. As a young man, he looked to substance abuse for solace and comfort, and soon he was incarcerated, ending up homeless for about eight years before meeting Lisa. In her youth, Lisa had to live in a children's shelter for a time due to violence at home. At 14, her own experience with drugs and alcohol began, and eventually, her addiction caused her a career. Her driving privileges left her with nowhere to go. But when the two met, they lived together. And even though it was in the car and with some dependency involved, they found each other and they found company and security with one another. Before long, Lisa discovered she was pregnant, already in her last trimester with her first son, Gino, now two years old, and you'll see him back here. It was during his delivery that Child Protective Services gave her the choice. She could go through drug rehab or lose her child. And at this moment, this is when the transformation began. Lisa and Gino completed the two-month rehabilitation program, rejoined Frank, and as a family, as you see them so sweetly behind me here, sought the help of CalWorks services. They received medical coverage, counseling, childcare, and assistance with transportation. With CalWorks support, they were able to secure housing. Frank was able to complete a GED program at Eastside Adult Education Center and obtained employment with a downtown streets team in San Jose. Let's give a big round of applause. And Lisa, of course, wasn't left behind at all. She has her own leadership and her own story to tell. She's been able to have her driver's license reinstated. She's now enrolled in a Master of Social Work program and is already working to give back to her community as an intern, also with a downtown streets team. Last year, they welcomed their second son, Jackson. Please help me give her a big round of applause. Please join us in commending Frank and Lisa for the opportunities they are creating for their new family. The demands placed upon them were sudden, but their response and metamorphosis have been stunning. We are honored to have played a part in your renewal and see that you have emerged with the strongest of souls. Thank you.
Would you like to say something, Lisa? Would you like to share something?
We'll let their successes speak for themselves, right? All right, we're gonna... Thank you. And we're gonna take a quick picture, so our back will be to you, but don't leave me now. And I'll ask my colleagues to come down and take a picture with us all together. So you...
You said, you're the star.
And next, we have Supervisor Young to present to Ayana McGee. Please.
Can Ayana join me up here, please? It's a big stage, let's give her a round of applause. Finding a way to put your life back together after it's been shattered is an inconceivable challenge. Doing so is monstrously difficult when you're young and the problems facing you are beyond your control. But that's precisely what Ayana McGee and her son Levante have managed to achieve. A superstar student in her final year of high school, Ayana's world was upended in 2020 when her family became homeless. As her family struggled to find shelter, Ayana found herself struggling in school, unable to maintain her grades while her family moved from place to place. Ayana was forced to drop out while her family worked to find a permanent home and soon discovered that she was pregnant. Following the birth of her son, Ayana tried to return to school, grappling with postpartum depression, lacking support from her new school while working part-time. Ayana couldn't find the success she was seeking. Wanting better opportunities for herself and her son, Ayana enrolled in CalWorks. Thank you for coming to us. Ayana began to find the support she needed in Associate Employment Counselor Maria Jerron. Maria helped Ayana enroll in adult education classes at Independence Adult Education and assisted her in securing transportation and childcare supportive services so she can get to class. Ayana received additional guidance from CalWorks Lead Site Representative Jean Archie, who helped keep Ayana motivated to succeed. Ayana's hard work paid off, and after six months of straight A's, she obtained her high school diploma in December of 2024. But there's more. Recognizing her passion for healthcare, Ayana enrolled in the Technical Education Program for Medical Assisting at Silicon Valley Adult Education and began classes in January 2025. Ayana continues to receive support from her Associate Employment Counselor, as well as Adult Education Site Representative Alexandra Mendoza, while simultaneously attending classes, working part-time as a home caregiver, volunteering at monthly food distribution events, and still being a full-time mom to her son. Ayana, you are a source of inspiration for all of us, and thank you for trusting our CalWorks program and our county staff to be part of your journey.
I'm gonna keep it kind of simple. I wasn't planning on talking because I got my wisdom teeth taken on Saturday. But thank you, everyone, who helped me get this far, and I appreciate the ceremony and just the celebration. It's touching, for real.
The next one is actually presented from our office here to Vanessa Semeniego. Vanessa's story is a story of love, specifically, a mother's love for her four children. A love so strong, it sharpened her will, shaped her destiny, and gave her the strength to rebuild her life, not for herself but for those most precious to her. Vanessa is mother to Alicia, twins, Ishaya, and Aiden, and David. They had her life changed forever at 12 years old when her father was deported to Mexico. This difficult time has led to periods of homelessness and homelessness, and she found herself finding comfort in substance issues and unstable relationships. At just 15 years old, Vanessa welcomed her first child, and then the following year came her twins. She was rushed through her adolescence, trying to raise a family, and she was mostly doing it on her own. Her most recent partner was incarcerated two years ago, at around the same time as she was having their baby. While caring for her children and struggling with chemical dependency, Vanessa was faced with surmounting responsibilities, such as how to handle her son's behavioral challenges and figuring out where they would... and figuring out where they would sleep at night and where to find the next meal. Vanessa navigated each barrier with little emotional or financial support, a situation further complicated for a young woman who lacked the knowledge and experience to find a better path forward. Willing to accept help, Vanessa improved her situation with the assistance she received from CalWorks program, which provided crucial support when she needed it most. CalWorks Employment Services assisted her with transportation and childcare costs necessary for her to find employment. She also received help with background records, clearance and job search. With resilience and commitment, Vanessa has now been employed full-time for more than a year at Life Moves, an interim housing organization focused on the issues of homelessness, where her positive attitude saw her quickly promoted within months. Equipped with a stable job to support her family, Vanessa can now look forward to a bright future. Cheered on by her children's believe in her, she plans to go back to school and earn a degree in medical field. The goal is to give her children a life better than the one she had while opening more doors for herself in their own career path. She has overcome the challenges in her life and is now substance-free by reminding herself that she can achieve anything that she sets her mind to. She wants others to rely on the same inner strength when times are tough so that they don't give up. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
For inspiring us all. And please join us congratulating Vanessa and her children for overcoming their hardships and thriving in a better life. And next up, we have Supervisor Ellenberg to present to Fretzel Calpito.
Hi, Fretzel. Come on down.
We're matching. It's so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We're matching. It's no big deal. The Oxford English Dictionary defines resilience as "the capacity to withstand or recover quickly from difficulties." Few individuals embody this trait more powerfully than Fretzel Calpito, who faced relentless challenges as a single mom with no support. With the aid of CalWorks, Fretzel not only endured, but rebuilt her life, emerging with renewed confidence and a sense of purpose. Her journey stands as a testament to the transformative power of resilience and the vital impact of support. In 2016, Fretzel found herself having to care for her young children alone. Having no choice but to move past a period of grief, she focused on her children attending to their physical, educational, emotional and moral needs. As the sole provider and role model for her five children, Haley Marie, who is 19, Rodney Albert, 17, Taimane, eight, Tawila, seven and Talah...
Talah.
Talah. Talah Ohay, thank you. I want to get your name exactly right. There was a time when Fretzel found herself feeling completely lost with no job or support and the overwhelming responsibility of being a parent who wanted more for her children and herself. It was then that Fretzel found CalWorks and that changed everything. Fretzel dreamed of returning to school to further her healthcare education, but didn't know where to start. She was thrilled to learn that CalWorks would support her return to school. Employment Counselor Laura Valdez provided guidance and assistance, recommending the Jump Start Repair Program that allowed Fretzel to have reliable transportation between home and school, assisting with childcare through choices for children, giving encouragement when needed most and believing in her when Fretzel had trouble believing in herself. At first, she was hesitant, even scared, to return to school at Mountain View Los Altos Adult School in the Certified Nursing Assistant and Home Health Aid Programs. However, she realized that she needed to be a strong role model for her children and she was determined to show them that one can overcome significant obstacles and be successful. Even with the challenges of tending to five children, Fretzel maintained perfect attendance in class, passed all her tests and enthusiastically participated, even helping other students. Recently, she proudly graduated and is working at a senior living center as a CNA. Looking to aim higher, she plans to continue her professional career by pursuing a degree in Licensed Vocational Nursing and eventually becoming a registered nurse, wanting to give back by helping other struggling families find their path, just as CalWorks helped Fretzel find hers. One lesson she hopes others take from her journey is that your past does not define your future. With the right mindset, the right support and a heart full of purpose, you can achieve anything. Congratulations on your accomplishments, Fretzel. Through unwavering resilience and fierce determination, you've not only overcome tremendous challenges, but also illuminated a path of hope and possibility for your entire family. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want your children to come to the picture? Those little CalPitos are welcome to come join their mama.
How beautiful. I had the three of you all have to stay home because he's gonna terrorize everybody here.
And next up, we have Supervisor Abicoga presenting to Daisy Garnica.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is my pleasure to now present the CalWorks Award to our Honoree from District Five, Daisy Garnica. Daisy was at one of the lowest points of her life she ever experienced as she faced the reality of becoming unhoused with her three young children. Maya?
Maya.
And Delilah?
Delilah.
And Andrew.
Yes, Andrew!
Unfortunately, after the father of her children relapsed into substance abuse, Daisy was left with a stark choice that would change the course of her life forever. She decided she must leave that environment behind so she could protect her family. Daisy was nervous, unsure she had the strength to walk into the applications office and ask for help. She was battling depression, anxiety and overwhelming insecurity. That first step forward was all it took. Once approved for the CalWorks program, Daisy came into the welfare-to-work orientation with her notebook, pen and documents that she might need. Not knowing what to expect, she prepared and was ready for anything. Her employment counselors, Ametria Phillips and Hillary Thigard, assisted Daisy with finding a therapist at Catholic Charities to help her cope with the depression and also connected her with both the Family Stabilization Team and Abode Services, who helped Daisy secure a safe home for her family. Through CalWorks, Daisy was connected to caregivers from the CalWorks Home Visiting Program. She worked with a home visitor to get her son personalized services at the school district and a referral to Kids Connection First Five Family Resource Center. This gave Daisy the opportunity to return to school and build her skills. She completed two certifications in Google IT Support and Digital Literacy and Microsoft Office Suite and her future began to come into focus. Through supervised job search, Daisy worked with Employment Counselor Adrian Malumbon, who helped her create a strong resume and guided her through the process of applying for jobs. The office manager, Carlos Feria, believed in Daisy and provided her the opportunity to work as an office assistant as part of the Paid Work Experience Program. Daisy is proud of the woman she has become. Two years ago, she was filled with fear and doubt. Now, she wakes up with purpose, continues to work hard to build a future and shows her children that anything is possible with faith and determination. Her greatest motivation is her children and she wants to show them the importance of never giving up and believing in yourself. Daisy wants others to know that if you're feeling lost or unsure, there is hope. Support is out there. You just need to take the first step. And so I just want to congratulate you, Daisy, on your many accomplishments. You are the epitome of strength, courage and resilience in the face of multiple barriers to make your family's future bright. And congratulations to you.
Next up, we have Vice President Renas to present to the Metropolitan Educational District.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining me up here. And as the folks who are representing Metro, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna say Metro Ed, but really it's Metropolitan Education District, but we all lovingly call Metro Ed. So in recognition of all of the work that they have been doing and because they are the 2025 CalWorks Community Partner of the Year... Oh, yes, please! I'm gonna talk for like 15 minutes all about them. No, I'm kidding. I'm just gonna try to tell you a little bit about what they do. But you have already seen through some of the participants, some of the work that can be done when you work in cross sectors, when folks who really care about elevating those community members that are working for themselves to create and achieve self-sufficiency. And so the folks behind me are also part of this effort. And so for many parents, they help them obtain the necessary education that can be daunting at times, right? Especially with all the obstacles that you heard in the testimonials. What they do is they supply the adult education to advance all of the families that you heard with job training, with support and to reach those educational goals. And let me tell you just a little bit about what Metro Ed has done in the past because they have an extensive history in educational community and delivering tailored classes and wraparound support for students. That's where really the difference is for the CalWork benefits. They offer a variety of adult education programs, including multiple levels of ESL, adult basic education, high school diploma and GED classes. And so they have one of the largest career technical education schools in Northern California. And as you can see today, this is the outcome of a lot of their work. They also have vocational training such as medical assistant, dental assistant, automotive repair and they ensure that students receive holistic support, empowering them to find scholastic successes while offering job readiness, workshops and counseling. And so as you can very well tell, these folks go above and beyond what I'm telling you that they technically do, right? We can't really translate and relate to you all of what the folks behind me are doing to elevate and to help support all of those families that you have seen. But I'm gonna try because I think it's worth telling their story. Some of the ways that they have done this is by offering workshops to discuss resume building and interview techniques. They have a career closet program for students who need interview attire. And they partner with Toys for Tots to have Christmas gifts distributed to the children of CalWorks students. This is really above and beyond. And the clients have expressed, they tell us, that they have tremendous, tremendous appreciation for Metro Ed. One of the students shared that they believed in her more than she believed in herself. And so with that support and encouragement from Metro Ed, she was able to obtain her GED and the Medical Assistant Certification. She is now an office manager at a medical clinic and said the program changed her life completely. So this is what Metro Ed does. They change lives, one student at a time, with a kind of skill set that lays the ground for a career. Please help me in congratulating them as the Community Partner of the Year Award and for all of the work that they're doing. I want to say thank you to the CalWorks Site Supervisor, Jerrin Dequina and CalWorks Site Representatives Alexandra Mendoza, Sandra Nguyen, Emily Paramo and Jody Wiley. Your work is exceedingly impactful and just absolutely greatly appreciated. Thank you to you all.
I just want to say thank you. We're honored for being chosen for Partner of the Year. And thank you, Metro Ed and CalWorks, on supporting us, on making a positive impact on the community. And thank you to... on the community. And thank you to my team for all your hard work.
All right, the next we have, we are honored to acknowledge Nafredi Beauty Supply and Salon for the Employer of the Year in recognition of their outstanding commitment to community engagement, mentorship, empowering women. See, owned by Kim Coleman, Nafredi Beauty Supply and Salon is more than just a business. It's a beacon of encouragement and inspiration for young girls and women. It's the oldest African-American-owned beauty supply and salon enterprise in Silicon Valley, celebrating thirty years in business. Kim serves as both a mentor and an employer, investing significant time and care in the development of her team and the broader community. Recognizing the lack of guidance for young women in their community, Kim envisioned an academy at her salon to help young women find direction and gain valuable skills after high school. While the academy itself didn't materialize, her commitment to youth development continued when the salon became a worksite partner for the County of Santa Clara's Intern and Earn Program, where she provided mentorship and support. Since becoming a partner at Worksite, Kim has advised eight young women, guiding them in skill development and cultivating their professional and personal growth. She truly invests in her mentees' futures, providing meaningful prospects and assistance. Kim is also an active community member. Her salon participated in the second annual Women's Empowerment Event held at the CalWorks Employment Services Office, where her team provided free braiding services to attendees. Her team of braiders helped women feel strong, beautiful, and confident by offering a variety of styles, free of charge, embodying the spirit of service and liberation. Nafredi Beauty Supply and Salon exemplifies a deep connection to the community, supporting our youth through the Intern and Earn Program, enabling women through their services and community initiatives. Kim's dedication to fostering growth, providing opportunities, and uplifting women makes them a truly deserving recipient of this recognition. And thank you to the team at Nafredi Beauty Supply and Salon, and these opportunities you are providing truly made a difference in the lives of the CalWorks families. Thank you.
Wow, this was such a surprise invite, and I thank Ms. Tucker from the program who nominated me for this award. I enjoyed every bit of mentoring the young girls and some young boys about how to run a retail store. And I'm happy they did learn how to count change back. So that was wonderful. Head peeps there. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, in closing, as the President of the Board of Supervisors, I would like to extend a special thank you to all the families that shared their stories with us today. You have left us all feeling tremendously inspired. I'd also like to thank all our attendees for taking part in today's celebration. Santa Clara County is committed to serving families in our community, and we welcome participation in this partnership. Finally, kudos to the Department of Employment and Benefit Services and to our county community partners for providing exceptional service in the CalWorks program every year. Thank you for showcasing exceptional work you do to the Board of Supervisors and the members of public. And again, congratulations to all our awarded recipients for achieving your goals. We wish you the best of luck and much success in the future. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on agenda, we are presenting the Proclamations and Commendations. The first one, I'm gonna ask Supervisor Young to come down to present a commendation for Kune Wright.
It's been such an inspirational program, and the inspiration continues. Can I have Kiantay Wright join me at the lectern here, please? Kiantay? Okay, so we have EMS in the house. We also have sheriff's deputies and a bunch of public safety folks. You're gonna want to hear this. Kiantay Wright participated in the County of Santa Clara's Intern and Earn Program this summer, working as a lifeguard at Calabunga Water Park at Lake Cunningham in San Jose. On July 6th, Kiantay performed a water rescue for a young girl who was struggling to keep her head above water after jumping off the monkey bars and into the pool. Injuring himself, his own leg in the process, Kiantay's quick thinking and heroism saved her life. Kiantay, thank you for your actions that day. I know I speak for all of my colleagues in the Board of Supervisors when I say we are so proud and so grateful to have you as a participant in the county's Intern and Earn Program. We created the program to serve you and students and young people like yourself, but in the end, you actually served us better by saving a life and really demonstrating what our youth in our county is capable of. So one more round of applause for Kiantay, please.
I just want to thank everyone for coming here, wherever, and I just, I'm just thankful to be here. And I don't know what else to say.
I think we have our next recruit here. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite the members and the team of the Clean Slate Tattoo Removal Program to join me on stage, please. Okay, today's commendation recognizes the Clean Slate Tattoo Remover Program, which is celebrating its thirty-first anniversary this year. The, yeah. The program was founded in nineteen ninety-four by the City of San Jose in partnership with the Santa Clara Valley Medical Center to address youth-related crime and gang activity by providing young people with a pathway to a brighter future. Clean Slate serves youth and young adults ages fourteen to twenty-five by offering removal of visible tattoos that are often barriers to education and employment. This program offers mentorship, counseling, life skills, education, job development, and access to community resources. Over the past thirty-one years, the Clean Slate Tattoo Remover Program has transformed countless lives by supporting youth, assisting survivors of human trafficking, and giving participants the hope of becoming thriving members of our community. Now, I'd like to introduce Aurelia Bailey, the Division Manager of the Clean Slate Tattoo Remover Program, to share a few words.
Thank you, Supervisor Young. I am honored to accept this commendation on behalf of the City of San Jose Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services Clean Slate Tattoo Removal Program, part of the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance. We know that tattoos can carry a heavy burden. For many of our participants, they become painful reminders of mistakes and trauma and influences that once defined them but now stand in the way of opportunity. But there is hope. As the supervisor mentioned, thirty-one years ago, that hope came through the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance, formerly known as the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force, which in partnership with Santa Clara Valley Medical Center created Clean Slate Tattoo Removal Program. Our program gives young people a chance, the chance to literally erase tattoos of the past and open doors for brighter future. Just as important as tattoo removal is the mentorship and support that help participants realize their worth and see new possibilities. As young one participant captured it best, looking back, "I'm more mature now, and I want my tattoos removed for the career I'm trying to take up and the life I want to live." Folks, that's what Clean Slate is about: uplifting people, breaking cycles, and creating second chances. Of course, none of this would be possible without Valley Medical Center Foundation, our volunteer doctors, and the dedicated staff behind me, along with our amazing boss, and the community supporters who believe in our youth. And since I have the mic, I'd like to do a shameless plug. If you are a doctor, since I know that this is also being televised, and if you're a doctor that's listening that's here today, we are always looking for, we need you, and we need you to come and volunteer at the San Jose, or at Santa Clara Valley Medical Center. And if you are a young person between the ages of fourteen and twenty-five, our next class begins September twenty-third. We welcome all, we welcome you to take that step forward a fresh start. So if you're trying to figure out how to get ahold of us, please get ahold of Supervisor Young's office, and she'll connect you to us. So on behalf of Clean Slate and the young people who inspire us every day, thank you. Thank you for this, for this recognition. We all know when we invest in our youth, we invest in hope, healing, and a strong future for all. So thank you.
Again, good afternoon. It is a solemn privilege indeed to present this next proclamation that shines a light on a disability often hidden in the shadows: fetal alcohol spectrum disorders, or FASD. Prenatal exposure to alcohol can cause lifelong brain damage, known as fetal alcohol spectrum disorders. FASD affects approximately five percent of the general population, but fully half of children in foster care and adoption, and third, and a third of individuals who are incarcerated. Yet FASD remains largely unrecognized. Too often, it is misdiagnosed as ADHD, bipolar disorder, autism, or even dismissed as bad character or a reflection of bad parenting. These misleading and harmful diagnoses lead to incorrect interventions that may follow individuals throughout their entire lives. But with the right identification, understanding, and prompt intervention, people with FASD can and do go on to lead healthy, productive adulteds. Without these supports, however, too many are left to suffer from unwarranted blame, unrealistic expectations, and unproductive punishment. This leads to marginalized and shortened lives that could and should have been full and meaningful. When left unaddressed, FASD does not only impact individuals and their families, but our entire community. People with unrecognized FASD are often the most expensive to county governments with disproportionate use of first responders, public assistance, incarceration, behavioral health services, child welfare, emergency and healthcare, special education, and the legal system. Here in Santa Clara County, we have made the decision to lead. We are the first county in the nation to take on this challenge across systems with a comprehensive five-year plan of prevention, diagnosis, and intervention. We are now moving into the critical phase of training, screening, and diagnosis. This work builds on a strong history. More than twenty-five years ago, Valley Medical Center launched one of the nation's first FASD diagnostic clinics and a coordinated screening program. That commitment continues today, two and a half decades later, through trainings and support groups, including the very first Spanish-language support group in the country, renewed diagnostic capacity, and a growing community of awareness and advocacy. Santa Clara County is a pioneer in addressing and reversing this public health epidemic. By leading with compassion, investing in prevention, and ensuring individuals with FASD are recognized and supported, we are creating a healthier and more just future for all of us. For all these reasons and more, it is my honor to proclaim September as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month in Santa Clara County, and I would now like to Disorders Awareness Month in Santa Clara County, and I would now like to welcome Catherine Page, President of FASD Northern California, to come forward and accept our proclamation and say a few words. Come on up this way. Do you want to, you'll say a little bit, and then we'll do a photo op?
Just a word. I am choking up here, and I might need to pass it on to one of my comrades, but I think you had a hand in putting together that information that Supervisor Ellenberg read. Where'd she go?
I'm here.
Oh, you're here.
You think I didn't just come up with all of that on my own?[658.51][658.51][laughing]
And she said it all. I had the honor of directing that clinic at Valley Med 25 years ago, and in fact, September 9/11, we were on our way in to have a clinic day when it was happening. And so right now is, it just feels like momentous time. We have a lot of work to do. We did see at the clinic, under pediatric specialties, around between 90 and 100 kids in about a year and a half. And pretty much everyone, the caregiver, the parent, the grandparent, was, as we presented our conclusions, tears would flow. Finally, somebody understands, there is something wrong with my kid. It's not just trauma. It's not just, I'm not doing discipline hard enough. There is something weird about my kid. Fetal alcohol looks like, yeah, it looks like ADHD, yeah, it looks like bipolar, it looks like learning disabilities, it looks like all kinds of stuff, mostly those. It also looks a little like autism. But mostly what it looks like is bad behavior, on purpose bad behavior. Unless you can look under that behavior and see that there's disconnections in the wiring in the brain that are causing, for example, one of the things that really gets parents a little trouble with the truth, a little trouble telling truth from fiction. So it looks like lying. In fact, there is wiring in the brain that makes it real hard to keep track of what the actual truth is. So it's just one tiny example of how the awareness that what you might have in your family, or your friends, or your employee, or yourself, could be brain wiring rather than on purpose messing with the system, screwing up, not caring enough, fear of success, you name it, brain wiring. And I did the math on the number of people here in Santa Clara County who probably have it, and I believe it was 92,000. Yeah, 92,000 people in Santa Clara County, if we go with the 5%, which is currently the accepted number, although Canada just came up with 8%. But if we go on that, nearly 100,000 people in this county have trouble keeping a job, planning, having good judgment, controlling impulses, not getting upset over little things, even though they look totally normal. They sound totally normal. The IQ can be totally normal, looks like a normal person. So I think I'm going to stop talking and step back and let some, I am a parent of a 45-year-old, and we have here parents of not quite so old. I'm going to step back and see if anybody wants to say a word. Can we do that? What?
We're going to turn and do a photo. We still have a lot of programming.
Oh, we need to do a photo so they don't have time to talk. Oh, they don't have time to talk.
I think we maybe weren't clear on expectations.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon again. I'm Margaret Abicoga, Supervisor for District 5, and it's an honor for me to bring forward this proclamation to recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month in Santa Clara County. I know this is a very difficult topic, but it's so important for us to raise awareness on this issue. I'd like to welcome and ask that Vic O'Jackian, he's a D5 resident, former Palo Alto Council Member Mayor, longtime tireless champion of mental health, and co-chair of our county's Suicide Prevention Oversight Committee. And he's right here, he's already joined me up on the podium, so welcome Vic.[1002.62][1002.62][applause] This month is a time to honor those we've lost to suicide, to support those who have survived, and to stand beside those who are grieving. And I did want, I wanted to note that unfortunately Vic's community, it's really all of our community in Palo Alto, has experienced several tragedies in the last few months, and I know that we as a community are grieving over the young folks that we have lost. It's a time for us also to reflect on our legislative efforts to prevent and reduce suicides and to reaffirm our commitment to building services in a county where no one feels alone in their pain. I wanted to bring to attention the state of youth mental health. As a mom myself, this is something that's been a priority for me, and it's frankly, unfortunately alarming. Whether it's academic pressure, unattainable beauty standards online, or feeling like there's no one safe to talk to, our young people are struggling. It breaks my heart to see young people, our youth, feel so isolated. This proclamation is our county saying, "We see you, we support you, and you don't have to carry your pain alone." We must also acknowledge that suicide affects people of all genders, and recent data shows important shifts I wanted to highlight. From 2021 to 2023, Santa Clara County saw, one, a decrease in the percentage of male suicides, but a consecutive increase in the percentage of female suicides. These patterns remind us that mental health stigma impacts everyone, but often in different ways. Suicide prevention must be gender-informed, recognizing the unique challenges each group faces. This is why we must continue to promote compassionate, stigma-free support systems, from peer conversations to professional care to county resources like the 988 crisis and suicide prevention lifeline. And there is plenty of support available. Seeking help and speaking openly with trusted friends, family members, or mental health professionals are acts of courage, not failure. You can also call or text the county's 988 hotline, the county's Crisis and Suicide Prevention Lifeline. This line gives you free confidential and compassionate support from a trained counselor who is here for you, no matter what you are going through. Specialized support is available for veterans, transgender individuals, and others who may need tailored care. If you're thinking about suicide or just feeling overwhelmed, please reach out to 988. Information will not be shared unless in-person assistance is needed through one of the community mobile response teams. I also wanted to share how residential care is equally critical, and I'm so proud of what Santa Clara County has done and continues to invest in expanding our behavioral health system, ensuring that when someone reaches out for help, there are services available to meet their needs. Since July 2022, the county has added 226 behavioral health treatment beds, and are on track to exceed our 2030 goal of 530 beds, potentially reaching 586 beds, and I'm so proud of that. I wanted to take this time now to put out a call to action. Reducing stigma begins with all of us. It starts with how we engage in conversations about mental health. Creating space for honest dialogue is essential to healing, and it's how we build a culture of care and connection. I want to also emphasize how interconnected everything is, from healthcare to public safety to putting food on the table. When residents lack reliable access to these critical services, it can heighten anxiety and lead to decisions that result in harm or even death. This is especially true for individuals exiting incarceration, those feeling financial hardship, and those impacted by legislation like H.R. 1, which will certainly destabilize their sense of security. We must keep a watchful eye on every resident because mental health does not exist in a vacuum, and it's our duty as community members and neighbors to provide support. With that, I'd like to close by saying thank you both to the county's Behavioral Health Department and our county's Suicide Prevention Oversight Committee for all that you do to raise awareness, inform the public, and create actionable goals to reduce and prevent suicide in our county. And I just wanted to again introduce my, I didn't want to call him, my dear friend, I think I've known him for at least 20 years now. Yes, Vic O'Jackian, who came to me, my council, when I was a city council member, asking us to do a resolution on suicide prevention. And he has worked so tirelessly over the decades to raise awareness within all of our communities. And he's been a true leader in advancing suicide prevention intervention efforts, promoting public education, and supporting families, personally supporting families across our region, both through his work with the National Alliance on Mental Illness, also known as NAMI, and his role with the county. So I'm just so delighted to welcome you, Vic, and would appreciate a few words from
So I'm going to immediately go off script. Part of the reason why I said I'd come and accept this proclamation, because there are other people who could do that, is I'm hoping some of you get involved in suicide prevention. Some people think it's just individuals like me who do suicide prevention work, and in fact, it requires a community response. So I'm hoping some of you take something away from today in just the recognition that this is Suicide Prevention Month and do something. So let me first start by acknowledging Supervisor Abicoga for presenting or initiating the action to have this proclamation. And I want to thank the supervisors for not just approving this proclamation, but the comment that Margaret just made, that we have a, in this county, unlike many counties in this state or in this country, we have a robust suicide prevention program. It's highly innovative. We've done things that other people haven't even thought or would have the courage to try. I'm accepting the proclamation not on behalf of myself, but on behalf of the county behavioral health staff's prevention staff members, who are highly involved in this suicide prevention program, and all of our highly dedicated volunteers, of which we have a large group of. Some of you wouldn't know this, but in 2011, there was a survey done on Californians, and what that survey showed was that a majority of Californians have had their lives affected by suicide. We don't talk about it, but most of us, I know there are people in this room who've had their lives touched by suicide. It's not a fad or a passing fancy to be involved in suicide prevention. This is a large public health concern, and so it requires all of us to do something. So the proclamation, some people might say, gee, that's nice. What does it do? It's a countermeasure to things like stigma and awareness, creating awareness around suicide prevention. The federal government, one of the agencies, calls this Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And it's to get people understanding that there's something out there that we should be doing. It's a large public health matter. Then I'm going to make one personal comment, especially because I see a couple of my local colleagues in the room. We've had several deaths recently. Two of them stand out to me, not that all of them aren't, I think, important. Two of them stand out because it's two teenagers who are transgender. Let's see, I've never figured out, just looking at myself personally, I judge myself on the skills that I have and am I using them, and on my emotional makeup. I don't base myself on hate or putting people down. And I'm sorry, and I never realized how much of an impact it has on me to think that some people are out there vulnerable and they're in that position because folks seem to want to denigrate them. We've done a good job, and I think we need to do a far better job, and I'm sorry to some of my friends here, because they know exactly what I'm talking about. We've done a good job in this county with our program, showing people that they belong and that we care about them and that we support them, and that's what we're going to keep working on. So I want to thank all of you for providing the proclamation, and I know from talking to most of you personally that you all have a dedication to suicide prevention, and I'm very grateful for that.
Trying to compose myself here. I now get to do a three for, three for, three for one, three. And that today, we have three major milestones in public transportation, each one showing how far we've come and the future we're building. And I'm honored to be joined today by Evelyn Tran, our General Counsel of the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, or VTA. She has served as interim General Manager during a very challenging time during COVID in 2020, and we're so, so grateful to have Evelyn as part of VTA. It's been a long time, I believe. You've served for many years. And Casey Framson, Chief of Staff for Caltrain's Executive Director, Michelle Bouchard. I think both the GMs were at a joint conference today, so they couldn't join us, but we're so happy to have Casey and Evelyn. And I just wanted to note, I'm excited, I get to serve on both the VTA Board with my colleague Vice President Arenas, and the Caltrain Board. I also serve on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and I've been on all these boards for over the last 15 so years. And when I first started, there are very few women in these roles, but I'm so proud to be able to say that both Caltrain and VTA are both headed by two outstanding women. I serve on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission of, I believe, we have 18 board members, and 75% of our board members are commissioned as now women. So I'm just so excited to see the growth of women in transportation. But today, we But today, we are celebrating September as Transit Month, VTA's 30th anniversary, and the first anniversary of Caltrain's electrification. Each of these achievements reflect the power of regional collaboration and the incredible work our transit agencies are doing to move Santa Clara County forward, quite literally, in a sustainable, equitable, and efficient way. September is Transit Month. First, we begin, uh, we begin by proclaiming September as such. It's a time to recognize the central role public transit plays in our daily lives. What began as a single day of recognition has grown into a month-long celebration because transit truly is a lifeline. And I did want to note that 20% of our residents in Santa Clara County are considered transit dependent, so it really is a lifeline for many folks. It connects residents to jobs, schools, medical appointments, and the events that make our community vibrant, all of this while reducing congestion, improving air quality, and knitting our diverse neighborhoods together. I've had the privilege, as mentioned, of serving on both Caltrain, VTA, and MTC, and it's been a joy to help make our system more efficient, both in time and energy. My goal, my vision for transit is to be able to provide a system that is accessible to everyone and that, that allows people to get to where they need to go for all of their different activities, not just to commute to jobs. And I look at, um, other places in the world. I just spent some time in Japan, in Korea this summer, and I look at the convenience and the multi-use opportunities that these places provide with transit, and that's what I envision us to be able to do someday here in Santa Clara County as well. For VTA's 30th anniversary, uh, VTA has provided essential bus, light rail, and paratransit services over three decades, while also delivering major projects like the BART to Silicon Valley Extension. VTA is also the county's congestion management agency, delivering road improvements, safe routes to schools, and helping us tackle our housing crisis through its transit-oriented development program, creating vibrant, affordable, and walkable neighborhoods near transit hubs. And this policy, at least, with this policy, at least 25% of the homes in each development must be affordable in households earning 60% of the area median income or below, ensuring equitable access and inclusive growth. And at our last board meeting, we approved the developer for a new affordable housing project adjacent to the Milpitas Transit Center and the Great Mall. And I just want to, again, thank VTA. I see transit and transportation and housing really go hand in hand and be able to, being able to provide, um, higher quality of life for folks here. And I just want to thank VTA for your 30 years of service and excellence, and so congratulations to you. And then Caltrain, um, this is really exciting. I believe it's almost to the day that we are seeing the first anniversary of electrified service. And I've been riding Caltrain a lot lately, and it, and I was just writing it to the Giants game the other day, and it's so exciting to see how people just love it, and they're just writing it. And, uh, the ridership has increased so much where, um, our, actually, weekend ridership is higher now, and, um, it's at 169% of pre-COVID levels. So ridership is just really booming, and so that's so exciting to see. So, uh, writers have really responded with enth- enthusiasm, not only, again, writing during their commute, but actually a lot of these, um, special events seem to be attracting writers. Electrification means quieter trains, cleaner air, and faster, more frequent service, helping California and the Bay Area meet their climate goals and making regional connections stronger than ever. And so I want to thank and congratulate Caltrain on electrifying, uh, this great service. So, um, with that, I wanted to just see if Evelyn and Casey want to say a few words?
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Abicoga. My name is Evelyn Tran, and I serve as VTA's General Counsel, or, um, General Manager, and CEO sends her regrets that she's unable to attend today. As, um, mentioned, uh, VTA is celebrating two major events this month. September's Transit Month, and we join, uh, with other transit agencies across the Bay Area to celebrate the role that public transit plays in the economic, social, and cultural vibrancy of our community. To do that, we've got several very fun challenges that you can participate for weekly prizes. Please check out our website for more information on that. And I want to highlight, um, a couple of the transit projects that we have going that I believe will change how we move in this, uh, county. The first is our large infrastructure project, the BART extension to Silicon Valley, where we will be building six additional miles of track and adding four more, uh, transit stations in Santa Clara and San Jose. We also have the Eastridge Connector, Eastridge to BART Regional Connector. That is an extension of our light rail at the terminus at Alum Rock to the Eastridge Transit Center, and it's being built in a very transit-dependent community. And when it's done, it will connect that community to our regional BART system, really important project for our county. But we're also, uh, celebrating our 30th year, our 30th anniversary. And as someone who's been with VTA for, I think, going on my 20th year now, I am really, uh, very, uh, proud and honored to come and accept the proclamation for both Transit Month and in celebration of our 30th anniversary. Um, and with that, I just want to thank, um, this Board of Supervisor, and also to be very appreciative of the fact that you, uh, lead and, uh, sit on our Board of Directors, and, uh, really appreciative of that leadership. So thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name's Casey Fromson. Thank you so much to the President and the members of the Board of Supervisors, and especially Supervisor Abicoga, who has been a wonderful and strong leader on the Caltrain Board. We really appreciate you being there through the tough times and the fun times like today. Um, as was mentioned, it was about a year ago that we launched electrified service, and this is the biggest transformation in Caltrain's 160-year history. The train was first steam when Abraham Lincoln was the president. It was a diesel system for 70 years, and last year, on September 21st, is when we electrified it. And you heard it, the riders are telling us that they love this system. We are serving over a million riders every month. Ridership has grown every month since we've launched, and from July of last year to July of this year, we've seen a ridership increase of 75%. And then our weekend ridership, as we said, has been the highest it's ever been. Riders are telling us they like the faster service, it's quieter, it's more reliable, they can get to school, to social events, doctor's appointments, visiting family and friends. And it used to be a system where you could ride once an hour. Now, every single station, day and late into the evening, it comes every half an hour at all of our stations, and then in the peak period, it's every 15 minutes. So this is now a system that you can just show up and go, and it can work for you in a lot of different ways. So next week and this month, we are focused on Transit Month. We certainly are joining our sister agencies at events across the, the region. And at Caltrain, we'll be at eight of our stations next week, really celebrating the riders, making sure that they hear from us how grateful we are for them for riding the system, and also sharing their stories, because that's the thing that we have to continue to remember. It's about the people that ride these systems. And even if you aren't a daily transit rider, you want those folks on transit because it makes all of our roads, uh, less congested and giving us just a better quality of life where we live. So I'll end with, again, thanking everyone for this recognition that I'm, uh, receiving on behalf of Caltrain. And we couldn't have gotten this far, especially with a project that was as big and lengthy as we just completed, without strong partners like, uh, the county of Santa Clara County. And we are really proud of how far we've gone, but we're even more excited about our future together. So with that, I thank you. (applause).
It is now time for our Employee Excellence Awards for the month of September.[1230.02][1230.02](applause). The awardees could come on up and join me in the chairs to my right and to my left. You know who you are, come on up.[1241.02][1241.02](applause). So this is the time every month where we have an opportunity to recognize just a handful of the truly extraordinary public servants who work here at the county. Go ahead and take a seat in the chairs. And the way this works is I will call you up one at a time, read a little blurb prepared about you by your department, then you'll take a step behind me, and, and President Lee will hand you your certificate. At the end, uh, after everyone's done, we'll take a group photo with the full board. Sound good? All right. So today, we're gonna be recognizing some of our employees from the Office of the County Executive, Office of the County Council, Facilities, the Fleet Department, Sheriff's Office, Social Services Agency, Santa Clara Valley Healthcare, Department of Planning and Development, and the Department of Parks and Recreation. And we're gonna start with Michael Worrell.[1311.65][1311.65](applause). Michael's an invaluable member of the CEO Administration Division's fiscal team, possessing exceptional knowledge of the county's accounting systems, guidelines, and processes. Michael upholds county policies and practices consistently and confidently, and most importantly, is always willing to help his colleagues navigate complex fiscal matters and resolve any issues that may arise. He collaborates with various teams so they better understand county policies and how to implement them. When a team is out of compliance, Michael works with them on alternative solutions, and his support enables departments to receive and spend their budget. On the fiscal team, Michael fosters a supportive environment and trains his team on new processes. His willingness to dedicate time to help them learn shows his commitment to their growth and the team's success. Thank you for all you do for the fiscal team and for the County Executive's office. Alan has served the Office of the County Council through restorative mediation practice for the last eight years, developing mediation programs within the Santa Clara County Superior Court Probate and Civil Harassment Divisions. Alan resolves complex and contentious disputes by fostering relationships between family members, caregivers, parties subject to court-ordered conservatorships, domestic partners, business partners, and members of the public. Her effort produces better outcomes and saves the court's time. Alan trains others in the system on mediation. Her classes teach attendees the art of mediation, negotiation, getting to yes, communicating nonviolently, and moving forward from conflict in a positive, respectful, and productive way. Through her efforts at the county, Alan has worked with colleagues to repair their relationships through direct and active communication, furthering the collaboration and productivity of the county's workforce. We appreciate all you do to help colleagues in the county, the courts, and the community navigate difficult situations. Congratulations. Thank you.[1461.42][1461.42](applause). As a work center manager overseeing gardeners and painters, Ruben ensures that our county facilities and landscapes are well-maintained and remain safe, functional, and welcoming for employees, residents, and visitors. Ruben leads with integrity, initiative, and a tireless work ethic. Often the first to arrive and the last to leave, Ruben steps in wherever needed, always with a positive attitude. Whether assisting a coworker resolving urgent issues or serving the community with empathy and professionalism, he approaches every task with patience and care. Ruben mentors staff, supports his team, and fosters an environment where everyone feels respected and valued. His composure under pressure and forward-thinking approach make him a steady presence in the workplace. His impact is felt daily through the trust he builds and the high standards he sets. Deputy VC has been instrumental in establishing and implementing the Sheriff's Office Unmanned Aerial System Program. He authored the initial UAS program proposal, helped develop the agency-wide policy, and authored and submitted the Certificate of Authorization to the Federal Aviation Authority. He developed standard operating procedures and pre-flight checklists for the UAS team, and created the initial user training for new team members. Once all approvals were obtained, Deputy VC presented the program at multiple community events and town hall meetings. Through his initiative, perseverance, and dedication, he has helped the Sheriff's Office implement this new technology, which will enhance both community and officer safety. Recently, Deputy VC joined the High Impact Team and quickly became an asset to the group. He demonstrated strong investigative skills, sound judgment, and a proactive approach to casework. His ability to collaborate effectively with his peers and adapt to the fast-paced demands of the unit has not gone unnoticed. Thank you for your contributions and congratulations.[1606.53][1606.53](applause). As an eligibility worker too with the Social Services Agency, Victor plays an important role in supporting community members who rely on essential safety net programs, including CalFresh, CalWorks, and Medi-Cal. His work is at the heart of our mission to serve Santa Clara County residents in need. Victor brings energy, focus, and empathy to his work. He understands the challenges faced by his clients and strives to ensure their experience is positive and supportive. He's the first to step up when support is needed, making him an invaluable asset to his team. His processing speed is exceptional, but even more impressive is the accuracy with which he maintains his caseload. Victor's a family man who cherishes quality time with his wife and two sons. He's pursuing a BA degree in sociology at CSU East Bay and loves giving back to his community. His standout achievement is a shoe drive, where he successfully collected 172 new pairs of shoes for children in Mexico. His dedication, compassion, and professionalism are inspiring. Nurse Executive Kim Johnson is an exceptional leader who exemplifies excellence, integrity, and compassion in everything she does. Kim is considered by her colleagues to be the cornerstone of the team. She consistently takes on additional responsibilities and duties to ensure the success of the team and the safety of patients. She does so without hesitation, while offering support and guidance to colleagues at all levels. Kim fosters innovation, embraces change, and encourages open dialogue to solve problems. She shines in her ability to navigate challenges while staying focused on outcomes. This makes her a respected strategic thinker and a trusted leader. Kim often needs to balance fiscal responsibility with patient-centered care and does so with aplomb. She ensures that operational decisions align with the mission, vision, values, and sustainability of Santa Clara Valley Medical Center. Thank you, Kim, for your service to our community, and congratulations.[1750.53][1750.53](applause). Manny Elias exemplifies the highest standards of public service in his role as an Office Specialist III at the Emergency Medical Services Agency. His dedication, professionalism, and exceptional work ethic make him an indispensable member of the team. Manny consistently goes above and beyond his core responsibilities. His attention to detail ensures that critical documentation and communications are processed accurately and on time. He approaches every task, whether routine or urgent, with a positive attitude and a genuine desire to help others. His interactions with EMS providers, agencies- His interactions with EMS providers, agency partners, and the public are consistently professional, courteous, and solution-oriented. His collaborative spirit and exceptional communication skills not only make daily operations run more smoothly, but also contribute to a positive, supportive workplace culture. In short, Manny is a quiet force behind the success of the EMS agency. He exemplifies what it means to serve the public with humility, dedication, and excellence. Congratulations. Rex Sheen. Rex started with Planning and Development as an Associate Management Analyst in June 2023 and has since become a quiet yet impactful force within the department. Rex processes and manages department contracts, handles HR liaison responsibilities, serves as the webmaster, and tackles various special projects. Rex has adapted to a dynamic environment that has seen him take on new tasks and projects. His willingness to learn and his capabilities with multiple software and technological mediums are an exceptionally critical asset to the department. Rex has impressed management with his ability to navigate the complex contract management process and act as a project manager for multiple projects, including the Website Revamp Project application, request to decommission, and performance measures updates. He exemplifies the core values of the department and of the county. His colleagues appreciate his contributions and his dedication to the greater planning and development team and the county organization. Thank you for your contribution. Christopher Shear. Park Ranger Christopher Shear is a pleasure to work with for everyone around him. His hallmark calm demeanor, thoughtfulness, and dedication are appreciated by all who work with him in the Hellier Santa Teresa and Marshall Cottle Park Unit, one of the most expansive park units in the county. He shows up to work early every day, is always willing to help others, and completes his work efficiently and effectively. Ranger Shear approaches his work with empathy, kindness, and an education-first approach with enforcement. As a field training officer, he's mentoring the next generation of park rangers and is well-respected by his trainees. They appreciate his constructive feedback, guidance, and genuine interest in their success. He supports the department's park volunteer program and is deeply valued by the dedicated group of longtime volunteers at Marshall Cottle Park. He also plays an instrumental role in the park's signature fall festival event, which attracts thousands of residents from across the county every year. In short, Ranger Shear is an integral part of the Parks and Recreation Department with a legacy of outstanding public service. Congratulations. All right, I would invite the board to come join me. We're going to turn our backs and take a group photo. A huge round of applause to all the recipients.
Yay, everybody. Well, first, I just want to say we will go ahead and adjourn to the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow morning at nine-thirty, right here. Thank you very much, everybody.